Welcome to the March 23, 2021 City of Broussard Council Meeting. Please silence your cell phones and if anyone from the audience would like to make a comment on an item listed on the agenda, please fill out a blue card located at the back of the room and turn the card into our city clerk. Each speaker will be given a maximum of five minutes. Please stand for the pledge. Counsel McGarrett, would you do this in prayer?
Yes, please keep Chris Miller in your prayers tonight. He passed away this week. We, the members of the Broussard City Council, beg of thee, Almighty God, to enlighten our minds so that our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land and fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Item 2.1, acceptance of the minutes of the March 9, 2021 meeting. Do we have a motion to accept?
I move.
Do we have a second? Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
The minutes were published in everyone's packet. Is there any council discussion?
Call for a question.
District 1, yes. District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 6?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Item 3.1, approval of the February 2021 financial report. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Presented tonight is our CFO, Mrs. Karen Fontenot. Welcome, Karen.
Hi, guys. February financials are in your packets. Overall, just an update, there are no new sales tax figures other than the ones I relayed last month. Still 25% ahead of budget, very happy about that. We actually, this week, received our first FEMA reimbursement from Hurricane Laura. So, just to give a recap, we have probably about half a million dollars in hurricane cleanup payroll, just resources that we dedicated to the two storms that we had. So, we got our first payment of probably about six. We're gonna get 75% of that reimbursed hopefully, so 75% of half a million is about $375,000. And last but not least, earlier this month, we received notification from Congress that they passed the American Rescue Plan, which allocated $65 billion to local governments. Louisiana got $5.185 million of that and the City of Broussard will get $4.68 million. I believe they're gonna divide it up into two payments. The first payment should be received sometimes 60 days after the bill is passed and we will get the second payment one year after that. So, we can use that money for water and sewer infrastructure and for services provided due to loss of revenue. We didn't really experience that, so water and sewer infrastructure is gonna be the low-hanging fruit for us in this, which we have plenty of those projects lined up. So, that's gonna be an easy way to fund some of those big projects. So, yeah, good news.
Yeah, there's still a lot of questions on how the money will be distributed, if it's a drawdown or a direct payment. We don't have those answers, no one has those answers yet, much like the PPP program. It's kinda put in place as they're working on some details. But we certainly have projects that can be put into those categories as we get more details.
And they may release additional guidance that will expand this criteria, so, you know, but as of now, water and sewer infrastructure looks like it'll be where we'll be spending those funds. So, any questions on the financials?
Any council discussion or questions for Karen? Is there any public comment, Tina?
No public comments. District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 6?
Yay.
At large? District 1? Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Karen. Item 4.1, Acadian and Indigenous Association of Louisiana Proclamation Recognizing the French Language. This is a presentation. Mr. Calvin Legge has asked to be here tonight. Welcome, Mr. Legge.
Yes, so the Acadian and Indigenous Association is just one of the groups I'm in. It's also the bilingual Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to introduce my wife and my friend Brian Clary and Holden Hoggett, who are also involved in the Chamber of Commerce. So, first of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Ray Bork and the Broussard City Council for allowing me to come here this afternoon and speak to you regarding the significance of the French proclamation that's on the agenda tonight. So, I'm the son of Royce Eugene Legge, one of 12 siblings. I'm of the lost generation of French speakers in Louisiana, parents who did not teach their children French so they wouldn't have to endure the same persecution that they did in school. So, I'm gonna start by, I've been asked several times, what's the significance of the date of September 7? So, I'd like to read as described in the consolidated diaries and journals of New England soldiers in Acadia leading up to expulsion. So, Officer Bancroft, September 17, 1755. New Brunswick Company suffered 20 of the French to be out of the garrison on Sunday the 7th. Lieutenant Crocker returned from Chignetteau and informed us that Mayor Frye had been to Shepparton to burn the villages that had fallen on a party of the enemy who had killed them and taken 20 of our men, including Lieutenant Marsh, Officer Thomas, September 7, 1755. Mayor Pravo and I came up from Fort Lawrence to camp. Much rumor about French and Indian, a small party were discovered. And then Officer Delaney, September 7, 1755. Seven transport ships are now at Les Mans in order to deport the Acadians. So, it's a pretty significant date in our history. So, if you don't mind, what I'd like to do, I'd like to get Brian Clary to come up and read the proclamation in French and English.
Bonsoir, madame, mesdames et messieurs. My name is Brian. I'm the co-founder of the Bilingual Chamber of Commerce alongside Holden Hoggett and Calvin Legge. It's an honor to be here with all of you today. And this proclamation is actually a moment that we all pause to remember that French requires intention. Whether you speak French or not, you all have a role to play. On a tuss, un rôle à jouer. Pour nous tous, on est très divers. We're very diverse and we want to really show the faces of the bilingual economy as it exists. This is just a drop in the bucket of 400 or more businesses in Louisiana who have identified themselves as bilingual businesses. Why that's important is because no one loses by acknowledging the value of the bilingual economy. In fact, we all benefit. And so, what this proclamation aims to do is just that, is to acknowledge bilingual accessibility, meaning in stores, at home, at school, on road signs, wherever, English is present. J'aimerais vous présenter, I'd like to introduce you to Lizzie Smythe-Ducé, who's a French immersion teacher, she's also the principal of École Saint-Landry, among many, many other roles that she plays. Hannah Bajron, also a French immersion teacher, marketing coordinator for the American Journal of French Studies. She also works for me as a contractor, is my editor-in-chief. Tiffany, if you don't know Tiffany, you should. She's very involved. And there in the back, my newest friend Jacob Sanyang, who's also the owner of The Point Restaurant. And without further ado, I'll get started. Whereas the City of Broussard, Louisiana recognizes that the French language is vitally important both to the identity and culture of the people who settled this area of South Louisiana in the 1700s and 1800s. Attendu que la ville de Broussard en Louisiane reconnaît que la langue française est une importance vitale pour l'identité et la culture des personnes qui se sont installées dans cette région du sud de Louisiana dans les années 1700 et 1800.
Whereas we encourage all of our citizens to teach with great pride to our children all that they can about the French language, culture and history that has made this area so uniquely different than any other area in the United States. Attendu que nous encouragons tous nos citoyens à enseigner avec une grande fierté à nos enfants tous ces quils, tous quils, we've talked about this already, tous qu'ils peuvent sur la langue, la culture et l'histoire française qui ont rendu cette région si différente de toutes les autres régions des États-Unis. Whereas we encourage our citizens to promote and speak French in public venues and family gatherings. Attendu que nous encouragons nos citoyens à promouvoir et à parler le français dans les lieux publics et les réunions familiales.
Bonjour. Whereas we encourage our local businesses to do business in French and/or in a bilingual manner. Attendu que nous encouragons nos entreprises locales à faire des affaires en français ou en bilingue.
Bonjour. We recognize that the French language has always been a vital part of the culture and economy of Broussard, Louisiana, and is a multi-billion dollar industry for the state of Louisiana.
Attendu que nous reconnaissons que la langue française a toujours été un élément vital de la culture et de l'économie de Broussard en Louisiane et que c'est une industrie de plusieurs milliards de dollars pour l'état de Louisiana. Merci.
Merci, mesdames et messieurs. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you all for coming tonight and being here. Item 4.2, Mr. Daniel Hutchinson proposed J-turns for South Bernard Road presentation. Welcome, Daniel. So, the council should have some maps in front of them to, and I believe we're also gonna have it on screen to represent the J-turn plan that our traffic engineer worked with, Como engineer, and to supply his recommendations. The question being, how do we control access as we get into more and more development along South Bernard Road, which we expect as the new section of the road will open? So, Daniel, thank you for supplying these maps and numbering the J-turn locations for us. Would you like to give us a sort of an explanation of what we're looking at?
So, when working with the traffic engineer, he looked at the layout of the existing South Bernard Phase 1 and South Bernard Phase 2 and he just gave some general recommendations of where he thought we should have turnarounds, J-turns at. As you see, there's one on the south side of Hard D Form. Then there's the roundabout on the far south side, so you have two turnaround points to access.
Can you call out the numbers on those, Daniel?
J-turn number one is to right to the south of Hard D Form. And that would allow you to, if you have a business on the other side of the road, you'll be able to turn around. And then you also have the roundabout on the far south side where Fairfield and South Bernard intersect. Then there's the section of road where J-turn 2 and 3 are on South Bernard between Hard D Form and Ambassador Caffrey. That's a more heavily populated area, so he suggested we have two J-turns in that section. Then the section between Albertson's Parkway and Ambassador Caffrey was, it was too narrow to fit any J-turns in there. By the time you put the turn lanes in and the tapers, they would've been running up on top of each other. So, then we cross to the north side of Albertson's Parkway and you have J-turn 4 and 5. He suggested that on J-turn 5, that we make it for a single unit truck, which is like a school bus or a fire truck. That way, on each side of Bernard Road, the far south side, you have the roundabout to where a school bus can go around or a fire truck. Then on the far north side of Bernard Road, you have another turnaround point.
So, that'd be number 5 and then the roundabout?
The roundabout would be the other one, yes, sir.
So, Daniel, where we're starting to develop the most is the intersection of Albertson's Parkway and South Bernard Road. As you know, and there's a medical facility coming behind A Bears, basically, and that property behind A Bears right near Y Not Stop. So, that particular intersection would be number 3.
Yes, sir.
That would not only be a J-turn, but it would also be a crossover, correct?
Yes, sir. It would, it's a J-turn incorporated with that access drive. And it was the most usable, he figured it'd be the best layout. That way, you push the J-turn farther north to access more of your properties on the south if we incorporated it like that.
It does make sense, in my opinion, and there's already an established driveway that it would, you know, it would be, it would give access to. And with that new medical facility coming there, what I understand from the developer is that's about 60 medical jobs that'll be in that facility. It's a radiology center as well as a walk-in type clinic or doctor's office. And they're actually starting, they started moving dirt on that property earlier this week. So, this particular number 3 is, there's no funding vote tonight, this is just a presentation, but building, the council would have some choices here. Build it all, but the recommendation, I think, has been and will be to at least focus on building number 3 since it's getting so heavily developed there. Access has been a problem for a little while and this would be the solution for that as part of a greater overall plan. You would agree with that, Daniel?
Yes, sir.
You wanna talk about numbers a little bit?
Okay. Cost, number 3 is a passenger car. And as you can see, that one costs a little bit more than the other passenger cars. The reason is, is you have a longer curbing section with that being with the turn lanes for South Bernard going to Ambassador Caffrey are longer for more storage. So, we're putting some curbing right there and then the curbing also goes further back towards the south. So, that's why that one's a little more expensive.
Because of its proximity to Ambassador Caffrey? Is that affecting the stacking of cars in the?
Well, the turn lanes for Ambassador Caffrey, I think, are about 300 feet to where as on our other intersections, our turn lanes are only 75 to 100 feet, the storage length. And so, you want when the car comes, when they get there, they'll go into the J-turn, they'll pass the J-turn up to get into the turn lane. You're curbing that, that way, nobody passes the J-turn and tries to make a J-turn 'cause then they can hit the car that's making the J-turn. So, there, it's gonna be a curb divider between your left turn lane and your opposing traffic.
Opposing traffic. There's also a document, I think, the council has to give, like a line drawing of number 3 to speak to what you're talking about, I think.
So, Daniel, questions? We've got 1, 2, and 3. The distance between 2 and 3, I guess I'm trying to figure out, I know why we're doing 3. 2, the distance between 2 and 3, and then between 1 and 2 is... 2, you have the business, 1, we have nothing right now, right? Corrective, but no business there.
No, sir.
I guess I'm trying to get it on 2. Would 3 be sufficient to come back or are we just trying to get people all that little return?
If you're heading, so if you're coming from Cypress Meadows and you're coming down Bernard Road, you're heading north, 3 would allow you to turn around and get access at daycare, which is by 2. Then the idea with 2 is if you're coming from Broussard and you're coming back towards like the roundabout, you can turn around to get into Riches, Y Not Stop and all of that. They're opposite, yes.
Daniel, that's gonna require more, you're gonna, it's all cement, the whole works? I mean, that's the cost is gonna involve that in construction?
Yes.
Have limestone base, all cement broken and?
It's gonna be black basin asphalt.
I have a question. Karen, can we afford to do all of them?
It's going to depend on everything else, though, considering some of the factors, but it's...
So, it'd be safer to maybe do 2 or 3 of them? Well, Daniel, Max, if we only do 1 or 2 of them, are those prices gonna hold for a year?
Well, that's, that's, what she's saying is true, I'm not...
Right, right.
But generally speaking, we get what we call economies of scale, where the bigger the project, the better the unit prices. We get a better, typically, we get better pricing as the project goes up. So, it's kind of a, you could go either way, situation, but those are the 2 things to consider, the budgetary part of it. And then, like I said, the bigger it is, usually we get better pricing.
So, Walter, Daniel, would you agree that the J-turns kind of need to work in pairs? Because when you put 1, you need to have, you know, the sibling of it to make the traffic flow correctly?
I would think 2 and 3 would be a good recommendation to do first. Then the 1 is kind of a standalone. You could do 1 kind of by itself. The South Bernard Phase 2, I would recommend going in pairs with those.
The only other one that seems relatively important would be 4 because this, you have, we have, if I'm looking at this correctly, 4 has some businesses that have developed there. Is 4 near the corner of Ambassador Caffrey and South Bernard Road?
No, 4's at Albertson's Parkway.
Okay, I'm sorry. What I thought I was looking at was where Fat Pats and that build-out was.
Mayor, if you remember, we looked at doing a J-turn in that section and it's just so short.
So, Fat Pats must be here. Here. This connects here.
Right, it's showing, so this is like A, and A connects here. I'm sorry, Walter, say again?
The section, we looked at the section between Albertson's and Ambassador, it was so short. And then when you look at trying to fit 1 in with the turn lanes and everything at Ambassador, it just didn't, it wasn't a practical consideration. You'd have to push it so far back, it'd be almost traffic at Albertson's. So...
So, just for informational purposes on budget concerning South Bernard Road, the council has funded the water line that will be installed on the new section that is not open yet. That's a funded project, correct, Karen? We have yet to fund the lights that will be installed. Traditionally, we work with Slim Co. 'cause they're in this area. They, you know, they did the project on the other side. So, that is a project that still needs to be funded. We do not have sewer funded and the council may, you know, continue what they've done before, just try to reach out to the businesses that are coming so they know where the biggest bang for the dollars are. But then in funding the J-turn plan, you know, all those things are worth a reminder that there is more to do on South Bernard Road. So, if the councils will us to fund 1 or 5 J-turns or anywhere between, that is how we'll handle it.
Mayor, you foresee this going? We need to do 3.
You foresee this going into next budget year, the funding of this?
Well, I expect so. We're only about 4 or 5 months away from the next budget year. So, by the time something gets, you know, how projects are, they need a final to do the final engineering to go to some, whatever the bid process is gonna be and then...
'Cause you start adding 2 or 3 of these projects up at a time and I think by law, we only require to amend the budget 5% of our total budget, by law.
Well, today, we are not asking for any kind of budget. It is only to get this conversation out in the open. So, when the council says we'd like to fund 1 or 3, next meeting, I can have it prepared to amend the budget and I'll take 2 votes to fund based on that decision.
Mayor, on number 3, do you think we can wait till next budget year? I mean, that...
My personal opinion is I do not think we can wait. There's already some heavy development on that corner and now we're gonna have a construction situation there.
And I'm only talking about number 3, the one going to the Ochsner, it's Ochsner.
Health Center, yeah. I agree, that should be moving as fast as possible.
Number 3 for me are the 2 most important for me. So, what?
They already have, we should, you know, number 2, I think, yes. And then, and then have 3. And then just add it all. So, 1, we're recommending number 3. Yeah, but number 2 is already...
They're pretty close right there, proximity.
Let's go back 1 second on the... We just had that 4 point. Well, we, that's what I'm saying, what is the timeframe that you say we potentially need to first?
So, the 4 billion is not necessarily for roads.
I'm not saying that, I'm asking a question. So, we have sewer development that we fund it, right?
No.
Yes. We just said we have water and sewer. So, we can use the money for water and sewer. What I'm trying to get at is, how soon will we, since we get it, we take that money back out, we can rededicate it to the J-turn, take the money from the grant that we're getting for the water? Right, a lot. So, I'm just, just, what's the timeframe of the...
They have, the federal government and the state, everything they're giving us, they're saying is coming, but they are not giving us a target. They just won't do it yet, they don't have...
The first payment is scheduled to be distributed 60 days after the bill is passed. I don't know if that's 60 days from federal to state or from federal to us. That part is not clear. We don't know when people receive them.
But I can interject this. If the city has a project that's being funded, I mean, we have, like you say, other targets that fit the model. As we're funding projects, we're still receiving the money to, we think, paying for projects that we fund, like the water line, that's been funded for a while. It's just the road contract has been in the way, so we can't release the water contract. Well, we still, we're making an assumption today, and I think a good one, that we're gonna get paid for the water line. So, the money's coming in and we can write our list of what fits and what doesn't, so it...
Walter, while we're on this stretcher road, are we gonna address the, permanently address the ingress and egress out of Sable Palm Phase 3? Right now, we have gravel and that's just not a permanent solution.
Well, once we get, once we, that's really not a place to call, see, that gravel is a maintenance issue. But once we get that, the thing is, they have 2 entrances to save them and a roundabout, which in effect becomes a J-turn. When we put the next J-turn just south of Hard D Form, you have a reasonable amount. Our actually, Daniel might correct me here, but our spacing, our J-turn spacing, as you're seeing it here, is quite a bit less than DOTD standard. And then, it's like every half a mile, I think, for DOTD. So, we actually have with this plan enough J-turns apart to the state. We've got more than we need. We have a situation where people are cutting through the median and that's really not, it's actually a violation.
Who you're asking? Uh, the ground was associated with all those.
It was a, it was put for maintenance.
Yeah.
Not for the price.
There's nothing stopping them from rolling in the future, neither.
Right.
The, the structural workers that are working there, just.
Unless you curve that median in some way, you're not gonna stop on that.
You gotta make a difference.
So, what are we talking about, different things we can do that with? Discourage people from crossing the median, whether it be curbing, planting, whatever. We, we've had some discussion about that. But, this type of roadway is, is safer. You tend to have right turn in, right turn out. You don't have the, you don't have what we call left turn movement. That's usually accidents. The J-turns, people go around, everything is kind of centered on right turn, which is safe. And that's my one-on-one level understanding of traffic.
So Walter, I'll encourage you to work with Councilman Reagan on that issue and maybe as we fund these projects, if there's a solution y'all can come up with that's satisfactory, it could be, I, I don't think it'd be a very expensive solution, no matter what's done in that area. It's just a, you know, a small median, ten foot wide. It could be funded within this project, constructed within this project and it would, would be more of a seamless process and not so much of a, a Band-Aid, let's say.
And, and uh, we're kind, we're, we've been talking about doing some, something that looks good, that's not a barrier. Uh, but then you have an idea, we have to talk to the traffic. So, I mean, yeah, if you wanna work on that, we'll just be happy to do it.
A raised curving would be a no.
Yeah.
Probably with that long stretch of road, if you put a raised curving out there, you could crawl fifty feet ahead of it, running, there's not a lot of traffic on that road since you've all covered it right now. If you just want to not go, you know, around that.
Yeah, and usually, usually what you see on a new, when it's a new subdivision, a lot of new construction. The construction people, I mean, they cut across whatever. They, they just, they don't necessarily uh. The homeowners are respecting more, in my.
But if we're gonna say something, I'll leave some that before this, I think, just what I would contact for, how many are, is a lot of the correct.
It's getting closer, but then Phase Three, B is coming on the other side, so yeah. Yeah, I, I don't think so, I don't think so.
So, minimum request from my side would be that we, I'm asking the council to fund at least number three. If there is a will to fund more, then, you know, if I can understand that tonight or in the near future, before we set the next agenda, I will have it organized to come forward for a council amendment.
I think we should do two and three. Must be doing that, since we're right there. Two and three, once, once there's no businesses there. Four, five, let's say we hold off. Two and three, you have, we have growth, we have growth and we have issues. So that's my recommendation, two and three.
For a budget amendment uh, at our next meeting. Any further questions for Daniel, uh, or public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
One, one last thing, if y'all decide to do two and three, we do have the right-of-way for three. We're gonna have to acquire the right-of-way for two. But we do have uh, three taken care of. So, we can, how? That, well, now it's LGMC. But uh, we did that as part of the plan.
So that is a construction cost, that is not a right-of-way acquisition included? So we'll have to look at how many feet you need, et cetera, on that.
In Dan, the number, okay, I wanna make, make it clear. Daniel's giving y'all estimates based on the, kind of an educated guess right now. We do have money in there, if I remember correctly, for right-of-way acquisition. We have some funding.
Yeah, we plugged uh, a generic number in there.
We plugged the number into it. So, we do, that, that is taking it, it's not a big amount of money, but it's, it's in the estimate.
Okay, so, and when you go to bid, we'll have our real numbers, but this is best estimate you can give us now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we gotta, we'll, we'll work on it more before the next meeting and bring it back to the council for approval. Thank you, thank you, Daniel. No, there's no council action tonight, so. Item five point one. Ordinance number two one dash six eight six. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one operating budget of revenues and expenditures for fourteen thousand dollars in the general fund capital outlay to purchase a Kubota lawnmower for the maintenance department. Do we have a motion to introduce? We have a motion in second. Uh, presented tonight is our Director of Public Works, Mr. Mel Bertrand, welcome, Mel.
Good evening, y'all. Um, yeah, like the mayor said, we, we're requesting a Kubota to sixty-inch rear discharge. Um, we found in the past that a rear discharge works better along the side of the road. It doesn't throw anything into the roadway where you get broken glass and everything else. So um, we have, we have, uh, we need to replace one that's uh, getting maintenance intensive. Um, we will keep that one for spare purposes and when we have additional stuff to do. But it's just, it's, it's getting old and it's getting tired and uh, the more you use it, the more expensive it's starting to cost. So, this Kubota is a diesel, like I said, a sixty-inch rear discharge and this is the state contract pricing that we have uh, acquired.
Tina, is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Um, council questions for Mel? Question?
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one? Yes. District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mel.
Item six point one, ordinances for adoption. Ordinance number two one dash six eight three. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one operating budget of revenues for twelve thousand dollars to extend the water line on Albertson's Parkway from the toy box storage across VNSF Railroad to PSC Supply. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move.
All right. Jared, we have your name on it as, as the presenter. This was introduced at our last meeting and passed with approval. Um, this is to make up a little bit of headroom. Uh, we had two grants that paid for this water line project, but the final bids came in a little higher than the estimated cost. Uh, do you have any?
No.
Comments about it?
No comments, we, we uh, it was adopted as introductory at the last meeting. It's ready for adoption as well.
Any public comment, Tina?
No public comments.
Open for council discussion?
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six point two, ordinance number two one dash six eight four. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one operating budget of revenues and expenditures up to forty-eight thousand dollars for the fire department used office building project. Do we have a motion to adopt? Uh, this item was also on the last agenda. Um, Assistant Chief uh, Justin Denies did a presentation and then our chief, Bron, was here to talk about this particular project, I think. Uh, so tonight is the final budget amendment vote. Bron, do you have any comments?
If it's approved, it'll be uh, moved sometime next week. So. Once uh, probably Cox is telling me six weeks to get everything done and once the contract is signed with Cox and then uh, mail and I'm gonna work on sewer and water and then power will be pretty quick too, so. Um, I would say with, probably within a month, month and a half, we should be able, be ready to go.
Is there any public comment, Tina?
No public comments.
Open for council discussion?
Question?
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one? District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, chief. Ordinance number, item six point three, ordinance number two one dash six eight five. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one operating budget of revenues and expenditures for twenty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars in the fire department payroll expense to add training, a training coordinator funded through the Lafayette City, City Parish consolidated government firefighting service contract. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move. Second.
Chief, would you like to add any comments?
I don't have any comments unless y'all have any questions. Uh, this was all part of the um, revision to our parish contract. Uh, we should be getting that check for that amount of money within the next couple of weeks. Uh, everything was signed, we got notified today that everything has been signed. So um, we should be, they should be processing um, the funding to send in.
Didn't we used to get more in there?
Prior administrations, we used to get, we didn't get this particular amount of money. We used to get more in other avenues and over the course of several budget years, we were cut and cut and cut. So um, we're on the, on the flip side now, there's a dedicated funding source.
This is a redirection of the create money, isn't it?
Recorrect, redirection of the create money, so that's a dedicated funding source. So we're kind of on the upwind of recovering from the cuts that we've had over the years. And we're gonna continue to um, you know, work on projects through the LCG and, and um, you know, recreating of uh, funding.
We, and there is equipment money that comes from the parish, but that, over the years, has been cut also.
Yes, it's been cut as well.
They're doing things in a different way.
Yeah, they used to give us uh, every department, one, well, every year we'd get ten thousand and every seventh year we'd get eighty. They cut that out several years ago and then they cut the parish contract down. We used to get fifty. It's down to forty-two thousand now, so the, over the years of the parish funding um, dropping, they kept cutting us uh, over the years, so it's.
But that, that money you're referring to now is tied into a contract we have with the parish because our fire department has a particular area even outside of Bruceord to make calls into the parish.
Correct.
Most importantly being structure fires.
Correct.
Fires and, you know, that, that's how that agreement is made and how that revenue stream is derived.
Correct, correct. Yeah, it's um, our contract to provide services in the unincorporated areas of Bruceord, of the parish.
Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Floor's still open for council discussion?
District six? At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That was our last item. Um, thank you all for being here tonight, please drive safely, meeting adjourned.
He said we don't have to vote on it, Jesse.